I'll call a meeting to order. Welcome to our May 22, 2024 County Council regular meeting. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the minutes of our April 17 meeting. Councillor Hogg and Councillor Calver, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Councillor Davison, Councillor Hegedorn, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. The Wardens report as, oh, sorry, disclosures of pecuniary interest, any declaration? None declared, thank you. Warden's report, can I get a motion to receive that? Deputy Reeve, Deputy Warden, Townend and Councillor Fritsch, any discussion? I will thank Deputy Reeve, Townend, for sitting in for me at the Ontario Health Teams Meeting in April. We were interviewing for our CAO and I appreciate that. I know it's a bit of a tedious meeting sometimes because it's a lot of important medical information that doesn't really concern us directly, but we've got to show the flag there. So, thank you very much, Nathan. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Matters for consideration, our first one is AMO conference delegation requests. We have a staff report. Anything you wish to add to this, Brenda?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to let council know that staff do not have any suggestions of potential delegations. Frankly, not sure of the value of delegations when it's 15 minutes of fame. I think it's different if you have an urgent issue that you have to get in front of government for an urgent reason, but the standard ones of we don't get enough infrastructure money or those kinds of things, I'm not sure of the value. So, we didn't have anything to suggest for you, but happy to take any suggestions if you have any.
Any suggestions or requests for delegation? None noted, can we just have a motion to receive that report then, please? Deputy Warden, Townend, Councillor Richardson, all in favor? That's carried, thanks. AMO request for nominations, this is a call for nominations for the AMO Board of Directors. Is there anyone willing to nominate a member? Councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, yes. I know that Deputy Warden Townend has an interest in serving on the AMO Board of Directors, so I'd like to make a motion with respect to nominating Deputy Warden Townend.
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, is there anyone willing to second that nomination? Councillor Fritsch, second the nomination? Any other nominations for that position? None noted? Are you willing to accept the nomination, Deputy Warden?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you. So, it is a requirement that our council approve Deputy Warden Townend's nomination, so I'll call the vote, all in favor. Congratulations. I'm going to AMO, I'll vote for you. Thanks very much. Affordable housing funding, staff report, Reid Canada Greener Affordable Housing Funding, this is Property Services Director, Infrastructure Services Director, Wager, I believe, on this one, or is it Mr. Day? No, it's Scott Raycraft.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's myself, Chris Wager.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so not much to add, I will highlight that as part of the strategic planning and the climate action plan, council wanted staff to look at energy audits and through the Canada Greener Affordable Housing Funding, which staff applied for, we can receive $76,000 in funding for these audits and staff's asking council to have staff accept the funding and move forward with the project for the ASHRAE Level III Energy Audits. Happy to answer any questions, should council have any?
Questions or comments on this? I just had one, the $76,000 figure, is that a percentage of what we are suggesting or is that the funding level for this program?
No, that's, we spoke to a contractor to get a ballpark amount, so financially it's $76,000, you know, plus our applicable HST, we could pay a little bit more, but once council directs staff to go ahead with the project due to the level of it, like we'll go out for quotes, so it could be less than the $76,000 or it could be the $76,000 that we know is a number from one of our consultants.
It'll be an interesting analysis, I hope we get the funding. So, we've got a motion to receive this report and to direct staff to accept the funding in the amount of $76,000 from the Canada Morgant Housing Corporation to complete an ASHRAE Level III Energy Audit at each of the county's social housing apartment buildings. Mover and secuder, please, Councillor Hogg, Councillor Hegedorn, any discussion? All in favor? Carried, thanks. Number four, Mr. Wager, I guess you're on again about the County Road Six, County Road Twenty-three Roundabout.
Yes, this is for the construction of a roundabout at the County Road Six and Twenty-three. Due to the size of this project, we did an RFP-style approach, so we're, we asked the bidders to submit health and safety plans, environmental plan, species at risk protection plan, their traffic protection plan, there's, you know, health and safety plans. All of those were scored and price was 70% and the plans, the schedule, everything else was another 30%, of the actual score, which included references and, again, more of their approach and how they're going to handle the project. We did have the low bidder scored second, so the second bid actually scored higher just with their submission, which we understand to be more suitable to handle a project of this size for the county. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, should council have any?
Questions for Mr. Wager? Yes, Councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess the obvious, the obvious question that I have is that the lower bidder was almost $176,000 lower and I see with the RFP, it was assessed 70% cost, 30% company profile. The project is already estimated over $300,000 over budget. I have some concerns with respect to taking a bid that we already know is over budget and I know that there's some thoughts or some expectations that there could be some savings, but I just have some very strong concerns with respect to the fact that we have to be very diligent with their money and $176,000 of the taxpayers' money is on the table here and from my understanding, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, the number two bidder, the Trudeau Construction Corporation, they do have experience with roundabouts, am I correct in the fact that they may have worked on a roundabout that was also part of the county's project being at Desert Island Road and Old Highway Two or 502? Am I correct there?
Through you, Mr. Chair, you are correct. Unfortunately, that's one of the scoring points that didn't match up is in the references. So, the low bidder submitted that as one of the references instead of the county or tiny-negga township, the client was Tomlinson and the project was through the Mohawks of Bay of Quinney. The actual project was a $1.9 million project, we asked for a million or a minimum of a $3 million project for a reference, they actually said the project was 4.6 or 4.7 million. So, all of these factors, even, they didn't submit their, I think it was their health and safety plan and their traffic protection plan was very, very limited. Because of this, I just don't think they can handle a project of this size. I did follow up with the, with the low bidder. I encouraged them to submit bids on other projects, staff at this time with recent projects in Camden East, we could end up paying more than the difference in price when you don't have a contractor that's as well suited for the magnitude of the project. Like, we're still looking with, at deficiencies and potentially accepting an inferior product on previous jobs because of contractors that we've gone with the low bid. So, in staff's opinion and our experience, sometimes the low bid actually doesn't save you money, it costs you more money and that's why we actually chose the RFP style for these larger projects. It's worked very well in the past and I'll reference Dundas Street. We were fortunate to have the low bidder in those situations, but when you compare more than to the price and actually what they're going to do for the residents, for the municipality, what their approach is, we have less engineering time, less staff time, which in our opinion are going to save more than the difference of the low bid.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Chris. So, just to confirm that the references or the references for each of these, or at least the two that are close together, the references were approached and confirmed as you've talked to them. I guess the other thing is, is that, again, $176,000 is a lot of money and I hate to use the, get into the what-ifs, but if green infrastructure partners hadn't have submitted a bid, the second bidder or the lowest bidder would have been Scott Trudeau Construction, is it conceivable? And again, I hate to use this because I don't want to get out into a world that we shouldn't get out into, but they are substantially lower than the other two, would they have been good enough at that point to do this project?
They, in this situation, they would have scored first if GIP did not submit a bid. That said, the two contractors that were the third and fourth with their price have committed themselves elsewhere in the communities, so their price reflects their heavy schedule. I was surprised to even receive a bid from Tomlinson considering all the work that they Mulrooney, or sorry, who was the, Gordon Barr was the other bidder and again, they're extremely busy with their own developments and it's my understanding, they put a price in because they kind of wanted the work, but they're also working in the area, so they want a little bit of control with their trucking and their organization. So, again, I feel like Green Infrastructure Partners and Scott Trudeau submitted competitive bids that are more accurately reflect what the actual price is and council can direct staff to award to Scott Trudeau, that is within your power. Just through the RFP process, I am very concerned with potentially the completion of the project and the quality of the project, dealing with a contractor that didn't really score as well with their submissions and solely basing it on price for a project of this magnitude.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I guess the only other question, have we used Scott Trudeau Construction in the past and have we had any problems with them in the past?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the only experience that we have with them in the past was they were a subcontractor to Tomlinson on the roundabout at County Road One and County Road Ten. There were some issues that was involving on that project regarding the placement of material of where the excess fill was going to be that led to some additional paperwork, engineering, environmental studies that that contractor would have been directly responsible for.
Yeah, okay, thanks, thanks, Chris. Like I say, my concerns is $176,000 that we're leaving and if we were substantially under budget, I could understand that, but we're not, we're over budget and we do have an opportunity to get closer to the budget and I think we all can accept the fact that in today's world, very rarely do things ever come in under budget. We can almost expect that we're probably going to come in even higher than what we're seeing here tonight, but that, those are my concerns with respect to those two tenders. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any other comments? Deputy Warden Townend?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. It will be a comment now because Mr. Wager actually answered my question, which was had staff met with Mr. Trudeau who came in as the second bidder, I think we can all appreciate that for, you know, local companies, it's hard to compete with bigger corporations like Green Infrastructure Partners and it's important for, you know, for these, for these local companies to understand the processes and know perhaps how they can be more, you know, more competitive in the future and if staff were amenable to meeting with them, but Mr. Wager's indicated that he has done that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Wager?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, just to clarify on the budget of this project, I know we're over budget in the actual contract price, but similar to our hot mix, we have to put provisional items in for options, so we do have $508,000 in additional items, so there's some AC indexing, some fuel price indexing, but there's also options for guide rail, like we have salvage and replace, we have replace with new, so they give us prices for both. So, just in the guide rail alone, I think was 270,000 for salvage and replace, or it was 280,000 to put brand new in. So, we're gonna, we'll look at that, but we're recommending to go with the item for putting brand new, for $10,000 you get brand new guide rail on the entire project, but that 270 comes off, so that's included in the price. So, staff's very confident that will come in below or at the budget for, that was approved by council.
Anything further on this one? We have a fairly detailed motion here that the May 9, 2024 staff report, Reid County Road Six, County Road Twenty-three Roundabout be noted and received and further, council directs staff to award the contract for Part A, B and Part D of tender number 202401 for the County Road Six and Road Twenty-three Roundabout to Green Infrastructure Partners Incorporated in the amount of $4,454,321.66 excluding HST. Further, that any shortfall in the County Road Six and County Road Twenty-three Roundabout that cannot be addressed by savings from other 2024 projects be funded from the Roads and Bridges Reserve and further, that the award of contract for tender number 202401 for County Road Six and County Road Twenty-three Roundabout to Green Infrastructure Partners Limited is subject to the approval of the Township of Loyalist for Part C. Can I get a motion on that one, please? Councillor Hegedorn? Is there a secuder? Deputy Warden Townend, all in favor? So, we have, let's get our hands up, gentlemen, one, two, three, four, five, opposed, one, two, the motion is carried, thank you. Item six is Potter Creighton South Main Construction. And this is Mr. Wager again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, this is a joint project with Loyalist Township and the developers Bay Creek and Mill Creek. So, as part of those developments, there's intersection improvements at Crater Drive and Potter Drive in the village of Odessa. That section of roadway is also at the end of its lifespan. Or sorry, Loyalist Utilities wants to replace their underground water sanitary, we're replacing our storm and the township also wants to install a multi-use path. So, we decided to do it as a joint contract because, you know, if we're in there once, there's no sense doing it over a couple of years and if we do it together, due to economy of scale, it should reduce the overall pricing for all parties. So, this was recently taken to Loyalist Township Council for their approval and staff's recommending that council directs staff to award the contract to K-Mulrooney Trucking in the amount of $1.542 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions, should council have any?
Questions for Mr. Wager on this? Are no questions? Again, we have a somewhat lengthy motion. The May 14, 24 staff report, Reid Potter Creighton South Main Reconstruction be noted and received and further, council directs staff to award the contract proportions of A, Part A and Part B related to county items for Loyalist Township Tender Number 202416 for the Potter Creighton South Main Reconstruction to K-Mulrooney Trucking Limited in the amount of $1,542,386 excluding HST and further, the council directs staff to enter into a developer agreement with Bay Creek, Mill Creek and Loyalist Township pending final terms and conditions that are acceptable to county staff and legal council and further, that any shortfall in the Potter Creighton South Main Reconstruction that can't be addressed by savings from other 2024 projects be funded from the Roads and Bridges Reserve. Can I get a mover and secorder for that motion, please? Deputy Warden, Townend and Councillor Davison, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item six is tax policy decisions. Mr. Day?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Before you, is the province on April 4 issued a couple of announcements with their budget allowing a new property tax option available to municipalities regarding a new subclass on the multi-resident rate. Council would have the option to set a discount of from 0 to 0.35%, so affect having a ratio of 0.65%. Just to go back on council's history for, during the budget process, we do look at tax policy. Council, you might remember, we have presently two multi-res property classes, an older one that's at a ratio of 2.0 and a new, what's called a new multi-resident at a 1.0. That was introduced in 2004. Our county did not have any properties into that until 2012 and just as further history, in 2017, our multi-res ratio that is at 2.0 was at 2.2194 and the province had restricted that to 2.0, so that's what we had lowered it to then. So, this option from the province is to encourage obviously multi-residential property building, it is only for seven units and more. As you can see in the report, it correspond with the province to see if we can put any other criteria on it such as affordability for affordable housing, but no, we could not. The effective date is when a bylaw is passed by county council is when it would take place, so a building permit would have to be issued on that bylaw date or after to qualify for that new class. Just as a reference, since this would be a new property class, there's no tax shift between the different classes because it's for new growth, but I just want to point out to council, you would, if you were to decide to adopt it, you'd have three multi-residential classes and that could be some disparity between your ratepayers on, depending on when they had their multi-res built, why they're getting the discount and that whole part of fairness would come up and you might hear from your ratepayers in that regard. Just looking for direction, if you're interested in pursuing that, I could bring a bylaw to the next council meeting if you do wish to go that route. I do want to mention there was another point two there on the municipal vacant tax on vacant homes. I think a lot more due diligence would have to be with our county treasurers, the lower tier treasurers and myself on if that was to be implemented, how that would work. It is in the, you might have heard in the news, and the city of Toronto does have this tax and it's been quite burdensome to administer and people to adhere to. So, with us being a rural community and having a lot of residential and seasonal dwellings, it might be very difficult to implement, but I'll leave it for council to discuss and if you do want me to look at that, pursuing that, those options.
Any questions or comments on this policy? Yes, Deputy Warden Townend?
I'll get the conversation going, I guess. From my perspective, I won't support taking us up on this for the simple reason that it won't accomplish what we need it to in terms of addressing the affordability crisis, which is concurrent with the housing crisis in general. This will not lower anyone's rent, it won't ensure affordable units are built without allowing us to place any constraints or conditions, these will simply just be tax breaks that will go to the developers' pockets and not be passed on to our residents who need affordable places to live. So, I'm reluctant also, given the state of our municipal finances in general, to continue to ask ratepayers to fund provincial tax incentives, initiatives, which as I've stated are not geared towards addressing key aspects of this housing crisis. So, I mean, that's, you know, my politics on the table, I'm not an adherent by any means to this government's theology of throwing money at developers to address the housing crisis and this is just another example of that in my mind.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councillor Richardson?
First is, I just want to confirm, Mark, that what we're talking is, how does, obviously this is single or upper tier governments, how does this affect our lower tier governments or does it affect our lower tier governments?
Through you, Mr. Warden, it totally affects the lower tiers because it affects your tax rates because we set the ratios here at the upper tier level, so it will affect your local tax rates on getting up to a 35% discount on your, on your portion of the tax if you are to allow it. I should point out that at this time, the province is not allowing it on the education portion, so you know that there's three components of our tax bill with the lower tier, the county and the education and they're not adjusting at this time, offering that discount on the education portion.
You satisfied with that, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you, I'm good with that and that's kind of, I think, where I thought it was going, but, I mean, we have to encourage building houses everywhere and I'm not really preferential as to what houses we built or what type of housing we built, as long as we build houses. And so, if this encourages us to build houses and put people in homes, I would be supportive of it and to Deputy Warden Townend's point, I agree, we got to quit going to the well with respect to our own taxpayers, but we do need to build houses and I'm a firm believer that no matter what type of housing we build, it's going to help us and so, you know, any kind of incentive that we can put out there to build houses and put people in homes and I think we need to support it, but that's just my opinion also. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. CAO Orchard has a comment as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thinking, council shouldn't feel pressured to make any kind of decision on this tonight, this isn't an urgent thing, there's no deadline. You might want to be mindful of what Mark was saying in terms of, imagine yourself if you built a multi-unit building before 2012 or before, when you're on the higher rate or you were a developer that built two years ago and you're at a slightly more preferential rate or you're the developer that's going to build next year at the very much better rate. I don't know how you feel if you're the first guy that built and is paying the higher tax. You might all have the same 10-unit building or a similar 10-unit building and how they feel about that. So, we just don't want you to feel rushed into making that decision tonight, we're providing you with the information. You could choose to table it and put it on the next agenda, gives you a month to think about it, gives you a month to talk to some of your developers or the owners of multi-unit buildings in your community and how they feel, they might want to reach out to you after maybe hearing about this tonight and give you their perspective. It seems to me you might have different perspectives depending on when you built your multi-unit building, so we just don't want you to feel rushed.
Yes, Councillor Hegedorn?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Day. There's one line in here that I just wanted to confirm, if this was to go through, it would be for a minimum of 35 years that it would be implemented automatically?
Correct. As long as it has that classification, it's for a 35-year period.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Yes, Councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I do appreciate and thank CAO Orchard for mentioning that because I do think that it's going to affect our lower tier governments and I would like to sleep on it, for better lack of a word, with respect to how it's going to affect our lower tier governments and how it's going to affect our builders and how it's going to affect our taxpayers. So, I appreciate and thank CAO Orchard for suggesting that maybe we can sort of let this sit and simmer and think about it for at least a meeting anyways, so thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councillor Fritsch?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My comment is actually on the second item, on the vacant home tax. Be, on the surface certainly it looks like an area you would not want to venture into, certainly because we have the complexities of seasonal and not seasonal people who may have seasonal but are living there and, or what looks like a permanent home and are not living there, you know, I have no idea how you'd ever administer it, but my only question is perhaps if staff can provide just a little bit more information on that, not- on that, not, not a long report. I'm not expecting something, but even a few more paragraphs on how that actually would be administered. I'd just be more interested before we make our final decision. Thank you.
Okay. You don't need a motion on that, do you? You do need a motion on that. That's a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Calver, seconds. All in favor of that motion? That's carried. I hope that doesn't supersede anything in procedure. It can all be of a piece. Anything further on, on either of these issues in this report? If there's no immediate action, can I simply get a motion to receive and include Councillor Fritsch's motion then? And defer. So can your motion include all of that? Councillor Fritsch, and did I get a seconder? It's Councillor Calver, I believe. All in favor? That's carried. Thanks. Okay, item seven, John M. Parrott Centre Declaration of Compliance. This is a requirement that we endorse the compliance. Angela's here. Hi, Angela. Long time no see, it seems. Do you want to enlighten us as to what this is all about?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So this is simply to confirm that all of the required reporting has occurred and that all of the information contained within the reports that have been submitted to the ministry have been accurate and that our financial obligations associated with any of those reporting has also been confirmed and is accurate.
It's that straightforward. Any comments or questions from council? None. So it's a rather lengthy but official motion that we have to pass to the staff report, re-LSAA Declaration of Compliance. Be noted and received. And further, that after making inquiries of the Director of Long Term Care Services, Angela Malcolm and other appropriate officers of the health service provider, the HSP, and subject to any exceptions identified on Appendix One to this Declaration of Compliance, to the best of the board's knowledge and belief, the HSP has fulfilled its obligations under the Long Term Care Home Service Accountability Agreement, that's the agreement, in effect during the applicable period. And further, that without limiting the generality of the foregoing, the HSP confirms that, one, it has complied with the provisions of the Connecting Care Act 2019 and with any compensation restraint legislation which applies to the HSP. And, two, every report submitted by the HSP is accurate in all respects and in full compliance with the terms of the agreement. And further, the council confirmed the warden and chief administrative officer as signing authorities for the Long Term Care Home Service Accountability Agreement Declaration of Compliance. I get a mover and seconder. Councillor Davison, Councillor Hogg, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Advisory Committee Recommendations and Reports, Technical Advisory Committee Roads and Bridges, Mr. Wager.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add or highlight, but I'll be happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Any questions for Mr. Wager on the tac report? None? Do I need a motion to just receive that? Are we going to do the, both of the advisory committee ones at once? Okay, we'll do them separately. Can I get a mover and seconder for that? Councillor Calver, Councillor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks. And the John M. Parrott Centre Compliance Report, Ms. Malcolm?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. So this is, this compliance report is also another reason why I provided is related to that Elsa report that we just, that we just discussed. I will say that as of yesterday, we are one hundred percent full at the John M. Parrott Centre, which is the very first time since COVID started. So that's really, really good news. We have, however, had forty admissions already this year, which is extraordinary and represents a significant amount of work and a significant amount of transition support, whether the person is admitting or discharging. You can see under staffing that we are struggling to recruit for PSW positions. However, I can share with you, and maybe you've seen it on various social media platforms, that we are doing a hiring blitz right now and trying something a little bit different in that you'll see daily posts now for hiring for PSWs. And so far, on day, the end of day two, it's going remarkably well. And so we're very excited. So I'll keep you posted as to how that progresses. There is no update as to the quality indicators, and that's just simply because the, the data isn't, has not been released yet. Our walking path will, it will be opening within days. And so it looks very, very good. And we will use that towards our restorative care program, which will support some of these quality indicators that you can see in the chart. There has been no ministry findings for this report. There will be for next one. The infection prevention and control, we did have a COVID outbreak in the beginning of April, and then we also had a respiratory outbreak in another RHA in April. Our vaccinations are going very, very well. And actually relative, I was on a call today, and relative to other long-term care homes, our, our COVID vaccinations for our residents is considerably higher than in other long-term care homes. So that's really good to see. It's good for our residents as well. We do have an increase in number of outbreaks. So far this year, we've already had ten compared to last year when we had a total of fifteen. And you can see in the red section of the chart related to infection prevention control, it's red simply because that's not when we would do the flu shots. And so that's why you see that big block of red in the center. And that is all I have to share. Happy to take any questions, though.
Thank you. Any questions for Angela? If not, we have, I need a motion to receive. Deputy Warden Townend and Councillor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Committee reports by members of council. Anyone have anything to bring forward from any committee you're sitting on? Nothing? County Department Activity Reports, starting with Administration, Brenda?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to thank our deputy warden and our warden for participating in the EOWC strategic planning effort. This is the first time that EOWC is doing a three-year plan instead of a one-year plan. I think, I think you guys had fun. It was a, it was a great day. Three of the CAOs, myself, Northumberland and Halliburton, chose to tackle the writing team to take all the information away from all the sticky notes that are all over the walls to, to write the document. And that will be presented to the wardens at their caucus meeting tomorrow. And just wanted to thank Carolyn Harvey and Tracy McKenzie, you'll see their picture on the United Way, for the Community Champion Award. So, thank you, Tracy.
That's great.
Happy to answer any questions council might have.
Any questions for Brenda? None? Finance, Mr. Day?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the one thing I would like to highlight in the report is the provincial offences stats in there. I'm happy to say that the number of tickets are up, but you'll see the dollar value is a little bit down compared to last year. And that was because last year, at that same period, we had a large environmental fine that was paid. So we are monitoring it closely, but we feel we're on budget to, for the fines so far, and we are keeping a close eye on it. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Mr. Day? None. Pelus, Ms. Chaney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The only, I have two highlights. One is just congratulations to Pam Kent and her co-workers across the region and in Southern Ontario who got together under the Children's Services Network and worked together as a group to share ideas, bring together a day with economic development, to bring children's services and economic development together. They created, hired a consultant together, created a communications campaign to help with encouraging people into the childcare sector workforce. So it was great to see that the smaller municipalities on her own would not have been able to do that, but as a combined front, they were able to do that and really make some strides. So congratulations to her and her, her coworkers. The only, the other thing that I'd like to add is that under Housing Services, it was previously reported about the hold on the National Housing Strategy funding affecting the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative and the Canada, Ontario Community Housing Initiative, as well as the Canada, Ontario housing benefit. So all of those funds are still on hold. There's been no agreement at this time between the federal and provincial governments. So we're still holding out hope that that will happen. We have received communications since the writing of this report from both the federal government and provincial government indicating that those dollars will continue to stay in, in the homelessness and affordable housing sector. However, they have not released any information as to how those funds will remain in the sector, whether they'll be allocated to municipalities, whether it be an application-based process, nor do we know what any type of guidelines around any of those dollars will be. So those are the only things I'd like to highlight. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Lynn? I would add my congratulations to Pam. It looks like that was a great collaboration. They look really happy in that picture anyway. Community and Development Services, Mr. Paul?
Thank you. Just a couple of things to highlight. Just last week, Rob Plumley organized a tourism fam, a tour on a bus where local businesses had the opportunity to travel through kind of our natural LNA region and just understand and appreciate all the different tourism offerings that are here. So it's really kind of business to business, and then it passes along to our visitors. And actually, it had coverage on CBC Radio. They did a story on that. So congrats to Rob with regards to that. And I guess tied to that as well, we've opened up our office at the Memorial Building now as a visitor's centre Monday to Friday. So it opened up just prior to the long weekend. And we've, have displays and the ability to, of course, ask questions and help visitors who are coming here to Lennox County. And then lastly, we actually launched, finally, it's live today, our development approvals project, so our PLL City Works launched today. We still have some work to do, but we expect probably in about thirty days as we go through the warranty period that our local municipalities will be working on that. And Anna's been doing a great job training and has done so much work on it. So appreciate all that she has done. And still some hiccups, but we're, we're really close now to having it fully in action. So thanks to all the local municipalities for the support on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? So that, the last one, you mentioned the City Works program. Obviously, you're just launching and staff are getting oriented to it. Although they've been working on this for quite a while.
Yes.
Will there be any sort of layperson's introduction of that for councillors? Because this is something that the public can reference as well. Is that, is that correct? Eventually?
Eventually, yes.
To be some sort of dashboard that they can go to to see where an individual development proposal is at? Is that part of the idea?
That, that'll be part of the idea. That'll roll out probably in two to three months with regards to that. But no, we've been more than happy, and I know Brenda and I have spoken about this as well, to have Anna come in and do a demonstration for, for council. So we'll see maybe how the next thirty days go, and we may be ready to do that for you at the June meeting.
Yeah, that would be very interesting. Thank you. And onward to Long Term Care Services Activities. Angela?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So as you can see, I'll just highlight that we were happy to get our CMI finally this year. And so it was actually, it went up, which is great. So we have an increase of sixty-four, sixty-four thousand dollars. There is a breakdown now of the level of care funding, which was that six point six percent that it really impressive released from the ministry. And so it breaks it down per envelope. And as you, as I've talked about before, you can't share one envelope with another envelope. So they're, they're all very specific in what you can utilize those funds for. The equality attainment premium funding, we do get that and that, we get that because we maintain our accreditation. So for us, it's through CARF, but it doesn't matter whether it's CARF or Accreditation Canada. So we would continue with that premium funding. And there has been a two point five percent increase for our residents' rent rate. And so that's been communicated to families through various methods so that they are aware. And certainly appreciated the support for the KFLNA Alzheimer's Walk for Memories, where we had a number of individuals that came and, and supported that very important project. Happy to take any questions.
Questions for Angela? Nothing? Emergency Services, Mr. Adair?
Hi, and through the warden. So you have the report before you. This is Paramedic Services Week as well. So we are celebrating with our paramedics the good work that they do and very proud of what they do every day in the field, as we've mentioned before. And there are some barbecues going on and just recognizing the staff. Also to note, when I wrote this, things weren't finalized, but they are now. So Craig Jones is our new chief, who will be starting on June the 10th. So we're real pleased to announce that and welcome him. And you, council will have an opportunity to meet him at a future council meeting. And so we're real excited about that. And I'm happy to receive any questions.
Yeah, any questions for Mike? Yes, Councillor Fritsch?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, Mike, in the, it's the second item in your report that relates to manual defibrillation, I'm, a question I'm more curious is, is there a way to explain that exactly? I assume you're not using the equipment, you're doing it physically?
Maybe do a demonstration on Tony.
I'd be happy to do a demonstration, Warden.
And what the benefit of it is?
The, the actual answer to the question is, so there's two different, the, the energy that's delivered to shock a heart back into, when it's, when it's misbehaving, back into a way that it's behaving. And we would like to see a nice QRS wave, like, you know, the thing that you see on TV sometimes. So if it goes into ventricular fibrillation or VTAC, we need to shock that. And so one of the things that we're going to do is that there's, for primary care paramedics, there's two modes, which is a semi-automatic, which means that the machine does the analyzing and the shocking. And then there's one where the paramedics can do the analyzing and shocking. And so that actually cuts down sometimes the analytical component of, of the defibrillation. So when our super smart paramedics are out there, they can see that they know that the patient needs to be shocked. They can just energize the machine and then push the button and shock the patient. So it actually reduces time to, it can reduce a little bit of time to actually shock a patient, which can be good for the patient. So this is all cardiac arrest that we're talking about here. And there's just two different ways to do it. And that's what we're doing is, is because it's an option now, then we're making that change.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions for Mr. Adair? Well, I'd like to thank Mike for his, his work as our interim chief these, these last few months. You've been a calm and competent presence. And I'm really glad you've, you've helped us steer us through to the position where we've actually got a, a permanent chief hired. So thanks very much, Mike.
Through the warden, you're welcome. And also, I'm not going anywhere. I will still be around from time to time to certainly support the new chief and to support Lennox and Addington. So really appreciate that. And in the same notion, I certainly want to send, you know, thank our staff, Robbie Burns as a deputy, as well as the superintendents and all of our staff for the support they've shown me over the last little while, and also for Lennox, Addington and council as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Moving on to Human Resources Activities, Trina?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't have anything to add or highlight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have about the report.
Any questions for Ms. McGarvey? I don't have a question, but I do have to thank Trina and Brenda, who have helped Stone Mills Township considerably in our search for a CAO. We don't have a human resources staff and they've been an invaluable resource for us. So thank you so much. And finally, our Infrastructure Services, Mr. Wager?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just like to congratulate Dan McDonald as being the successful candidate for the Supervisor of Property Services. I'd like to welcome back Eric and Owen as a returning summer student, and then welcome Hannah, Mark, Wes and Declan to the team as well. Be happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Any questions for Mr. Wager? And at this time, can I get a motion to receive all the activity reports, please? Councillor Davison, Councillor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks. We have a number of resolutions, most if not all of which are quite local. The first one is a resolution on national The first one is a resolution on national housing affordability crisis. Does someone wish to speak to this resolution? This is a resolution from our own Pallas Committee, asking council to support them in their request to the both levels of government to get off their, and get their act together. Does anyone wish to support this resolution? Councilor Hogg, Councilor Fritsch? Thank you very much. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. The next one is from our neighbors in Hastings on requesting sustainable infrastructure funding for small rural municipalities. What are your wishes on this one? It's Mr. Calver. Council Calver.
I'd like to put a motion that we support it.
Receive and support. Is there a seconder? Councilor Hegedorn, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Housing funding. This is a resolution from Loyalist Township. Anyone wish to speak to this one? Council Davison, moves and supports. Is there a seconder? Councilor Hogg, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And another one from our Loyalist Township on maintaining the public health Ontario Labs. Deputy Warden Townend and Councilor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Some of you were slightly hesitant, and I was thinking, are we not going to receive and support our own local resolutions? Don't be so bashful. Matters for information, national housing strategy, funding, letter to service managers. Let's get a motion to receive all of these. And if you, Councilor Hogg and Councilor Fritsch, do you wish to pull either of these out? All in favor, then, to receive these? That's carried. Thank you. Number two item, so we've got all of those included. That was all of them, so that's right through number six, then. Tracy? Okay, that is done. Other business, statements by members, notice of motion, matters of urgency. Not noted. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to move into closed session to deal with a matter pursuant to Section 239 of the Municipal Act as amended. As part of the meeting will be closed, the public in order to adopt closed session minutes, consider a proposed or pending acquisition of land by the municipality, and to discuss two matters under labor relations. Would I get a mover and seconder, please? Deputy Warden Townend, Councilor Richardson, all in favor? That's carried. We won't use mics during this closed session, and anyone who is not supposed to be here should.
County Council approved minutes from the April 17 closed session meeting and considered two potential acquisition of property and two labor relations matters. So I need, is this a motion that I need? That staff proceed as directed in closed session? That's the motion I need from Councilor Hegedorn and Councilor Hogg, all in favor. That's carried. And I should get back to my regular meeting agenda. And we simply need a confirmation of proceedings motion from Councilor Richardson and Councilor Fish, all in favor. And motion to adjourn, Councilor Hogg and Councilor Hegedorn, all in favor. That's carried.